All right, I call the public hearing on Farm Operations Law to Order. Let's stand and pledge a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I just want to explain, I'm wearing a mask because I was exposed to COVID, but I am testing negative, and everyone has their traits up here. So Carol, can you please read the public notice?
Please take notice that the town will hold a public hearing on February 13th postponed since 2015 at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 121 Center Road, Bryant Ave., in the town of Clinton, New York, at 6:15 PM. Or as soon thereafter, as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning the proposed local law of 2024 entirely, revise local law amending the town code to provide for the regulation of farm operations and agricultural activities. The local law will be presented immediately through the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the town clerk's office and the website for inspection during regularly business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have the opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place of order.
Thank you, Carol. I also want to mention that there are masks in back if anyone wants them. I make a motion to open the floor to public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
And the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Three minutes. Please say who you are and where you live, and any comments on the Farm Operations Law.
You got to come up to the mic, please.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Hello. My name is Russell Moss. I'm the general manager of Malaya Estate Vineyard. I don't talk much in public because I am a farmer, so I'm incredibly nervous. I wrote this down, so I'm just going to read from it, if that's all right.
Don't be nervous. Read away.
So, tonight, as we delve into the critical proposal of introducing farm tasting rooms and restaurants, I bring forth a perspective deeply rooted in both data-driven analysis and personal experience. As a young farmer myself, operating Malaya Estate here in the Hudson Valley, I understand firsthand the challenges faced by agricultural entrepreneurs in our region. Let's contextualize our discussion with some appalling statistics. Currently, the ratio of farmers over the age of 65 compared to farmers 35 and younger stands at a staggering three to one. This demographic disparity underscores the urgent need to support and empower young farmers like us through meaningful legislation that will have a positive impact on our bottom line. At Malaya Estate, we proudly represent the next generation of agricultural stewards committed to revitalizing our rural landscapes and preserving our farming heritage. However, our journey as young farmers is not without its obstacles. The economic reality of farming can be best described as land-rich, cash-poor. While we may own valuable real assets in the form of land, our profit margins remain razor-thin, leaving us financially vulnerable. Allow me to illustrate this point with a closer look at vineyard economics. To cultivate an acre of grapes, a high-value specialty crop costs eight to 10 grand an acre. In the Hudson Valley, profit margins for wine grapes hover around 5% to 10% if we profit at all, a precarious balance between revenue and expenses that is not uncommon among modern farmers. As a winery, we're able to make a value-added product, thereby improving our margins to around 10% to 20%, making the farm tasting room and farm restaurant a necessary revenue channel for us to operate sustainably. Family farms such as Malaya Estate have faced decline due to financial challenges. Without access to additional revenue streams, many small-scale farmers are forced to relinquish control to lenders, large agricultural corporations, or to sell their land for development. But Malaya Estate stands as a beacon of hope, a testament to the resilience and ingenuity of family farms. Laws like we are discussing this evening can help us ensure that the small family farmer is protected and afforded the liberties necessary to prosper in the town of Clinton. This proposed legislation to allow farm tasting rooms and restaurants offers a lifeline to farmers like us. By diversifying our revenue streams and tapping into the burgeoning agritourism market, we can bolster our bottom line and bring ourselves closer to financial sustainability. Studies have shown that agritourism can significantly bolster farm revenues, with some estimates suggesting an increase of up to 30%. The proposed law has the ability to have a truly meaningful impact on small family farms such as Malaya Estate. Moreover, this law isn't just about economics, it's about safeguarding the future of family farms in our community. By providing small-scale family farmers with tools and opportunities needed to thrive, we can ensure that agriculture remains viable and vibrant industry for generations to come. In conclusion, I urge you all to lend your unwavering support to this proposal. Let's harness the power of legislation to uplift and empower young farmers, ensuring that the legacy of family farming endures in the town of Clinton. Together, let's pave the way for a future where small family farms not only survive but thrive in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yep.
I'll read.
There you go.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ralph Chanezi.
Ralph, can you just, because the people at home won't be able to hear you, can you speak into the mic, please?
People at home?
Yeah, there's people watching, believe it or not.
You're on ABC Live.
Hello, my name is Ralph Chanezi. I've been living in Clinton Corners now since 1967, maybe. We've owned land since 1963 on Longview Road and what's now called Story Lane. And, you know, I drive these roads a lot. And almost every day, at least twice a day, I come to the corner of.
Ralph, excuse me, are you wanting to address the issue of the stop sign at the end of the law?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so this is a public hearing about the farm law. We will get to the public hearing at the regular meeting, and then you can talk to us about the stop sign.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry. Don't go anywhere. Don't let you know when we're ready.
All right, so I'll in fact call you, Ralph. Anyone on the Farm Operations, Stacy?
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much. Thank you, Russell, very much for that well-spoken introduction before Malaya, and I do understand exactly where this law is going and what we do need. My problem being is, I've been doing this for six years. I'm Stacy Higgins from Black City Brewing Company and Old Adrian's Farm. I might have not done it correctly in the beginning, but I have done everything to the letter from five years ago, and I'm still working on trying to legalize my business. I have candid in after the new law, which I was a part of creating. I've handed in my applications, and I've had town meetings, Zoom meetings in regards to the building permission and all of that, and people coming up and doing visitation. The problem being is that I know we're a part of my town, and I'm supposed to be kept up on, I'm supposed to keep up on exactly what's going on, but I have no communication at all. Now, with this new law coming in, I'm confused completely, and I think it is a very good law, but which law do I follow? The law that we first put into effect in 2021, or is this added to it? I'm very confused, and I'm not getting any communication in between that. I have handed in my building permits, and right at the moment, I don't have a CO because I've gone through six zoning officers and I don't know how many building inspectors. So that's holding me up right now for doing ag education and ag tourism at this point in time. Sooner or later, I'm going to close down because of this. So I do need more communication between the town and myself to sit down and go over everything. There's only about three or four people or businesses in this town that are going to be affected by this new law and the law that we made back three years ago. So there's no liaisons with this. There's nobody telling us what is right and wrong at this point in time, and this is a concern I have for this town, that we put our permits in and we have to keep on it, and who do we keep on? Nobody communicates, nobody calls me back. I've dropped stuff off, and I don't get communications other than an email stating, this is what I need to do, which I've already done. So sit down with me as a fellow, you know, citizen here in the town of Clinton to go over everything. I'm not hiding anything, I just want to get this over and done with so I can go on with my business. And this is my concern, that I have not had the respect from the town members for this. And I'm more than willing to sit down and go over everything and get this over and done with. And as you know, I ran for the town council, and I'm committed to the town. So that's exactly what I'd like to help with, and that's my concern tonight.
So to bring it back, if you would mind, to bring it back to the subject of the public hearing, am I, to understand that your concern with the new law is that you, the permitting process is too complicated, but how is it different than the old?
I haven't gone through it. I have not gone through the whole process. So I would like to know exactly which law I'm supposed to be following right now.
Well, right now, it's the old law because this is still in process.
Which I handed in twice.
Okay, but I empathize. No, I get it, and I empathize and I understand, but this isn't the, other than telling, letting us know, which is good, I appreciate you telling us that you're frustrated by the process. I would like, if we can, to focus on the new law, and does it need, are there sections that need to be changed? Is it good? Does it need work? Did we forget something? Like, that's what we're.
Okay, no, I've been reading through.
Thank you.
It's gone through from 17 pages to 21 pages now.
Yeah, I know it's long. Yeah, we have it now.
And my comment, I think, two months ago was that if we are considering the old law, why not make an amendment to put the restaurant portion of it on that old law? This way, you have one law, when somebody comes in to open up a business, you have the exact pamphlet here. This is exactly what you need to do, not go through 21 pages of another law to make sure that you're communicating correctly and doing something the leading way. That's my problem right there. So thank you very much for listening to me, and hopefully we can sit down and, you know, correct this at this point in time. Jeff, you've done a wonderful job. I'm not saying you haven't, but there's no communication in this town at all at this point in time.
Thank you, Stacy. Anyone else? Do you want to speak, Jeff?
Jeff Newman, Minnesota Department of Enforcement Inspector.
I don't have a mic.
Thanks. So the reason that this was, is a standalone law, it's replacing an existing standalone law in Section 250-50, the, I forget the exact title of it now, but the farm regulations that are currently in place. The old law that Stacy's referring to, I believe, is the agricultural event venue law which was passed a few years ago, that's a separate standalone thing because it's a separate use. So if you look at the Schedule of Use regulations, each use in there has a section of code that's relevant, specific to that use. So if you want it to be a junkyard, you go to the section on junkyards. If you wanted to be an ag events venue, you'd go to the section on that, short for rental, the section on that. So that's why it's separated out. So I would recommend that we stay that way.
Can you speak to how that will work then? Because that's what Stacy brought up, that we have the farm law, and then you have your ag events law. And I understand what you're pointing, so how, somebody moves into town, they buy a farm, and they want to start raising mushrooms, and then they also want to have a tasting room. No, that's not the right, explain how you would navigate that.
Sure.
The two things as separate, if you could.
Yeah, everything comes back to use, whether it's a farm or any other property or endeavor. A, is the use allowed, and in this case, it's agriculture, which is allowed in all of our districts. So if a farmer is looking at their land and saying, well, I can grow this many crops on here, and the economics, Russell clearly pointed out, works through that economics and says, well, I can't make it by just growing beans. So what I need to do to supplement that income is something that exists outside of the protections of agricultural markets. Agricultural markets in New York State protects a farmer's right to direct market and sell their own on-farm agricultural products directly to the community. We don't regulate that, New York State does. But if a farm needs an additional revenue stream in order to help make ends meet and maintain their farm, the town of Clinton has seen fit to offer a couple of options. One of them is the agricultural event venue. So if somebody says, occasionally, I want to do an event on my farm that's focused on agritourism, which is part of the definition of our agricultural events venue, it's focused on agritourism, and they're going to do those occasionally, they can apply for that special use permit. If a property is looking to do something on a more regular basis by offering the tasting room, or probably the restaurant, or that kind of a thing, under this new law, then they would apply for that. So it really comes down to what their use is.
So a tasting room or restaurant would be under the new law, and then the ag events is, okay, thank you for, hopefully everybody gets.
Right, and a property can hold more than one special use permit in the town of Clinton. So if somebody had a property that, if this new law passes, and they open a tasting room, and they want to do occasional agricultural events, they could also get a special use permit for an ag event venue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, one question. We want to solve Stacy's problem. Where is the endpoint to this? Where is things being held up?
Well, without stepping outside of.
I understand that, I just want to get to the.
Yeah, the way that the process goes is that an application is filed, it's reviewed for completeness. Once it's deemed complete enough for review by the planning board, it goes to the planning board. Planning board will, depending on the application, they have different routes to go. In Stacy's case, the next step was to send it to the town engineers, and so that's a very common step. The town engineers review it, they send comments, then the applicant is to respond to those comments. And then the planning board can move forward once that negotiation is completed.
So it's hung up at the planning board is kind of what we're saying?
Well, this is outside of the.
Okay.
But I'm happy to have that discussion.
Yeah, just trying to understand the problem, Stacy.
Yes.
I mean, I've read this bill five times, all 24, 21 pages, more than any paper I've read in college. So I'm now an expert on farm law. And I find it to be a very friendly bill towards farmers.
That's the intent. That was the intent.
Yeah, it's, that's the intent, and that's what it's supposed to do, so we don't have any need for upset farmers. We want to figure out the problem.
Any other comments on the Farm Operations Law? All right, I make a motion to approve to keep the public hearing open until March 12th at 6:15 PM for further comments. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All in favor?
Aye.
So now we will move on to the public hearing for the Maintenance Reserve Fund. Carol, can you please read the public hearing notice?
Please take notice that the town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on February 13th postponed to February 15th, 2024, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 121 Center Road, Bryant Ave., in the town of Clinton, New York, at 6:25 prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning appropriating and transferring $30,000 from the town's general fund surplus to the Building Repair and Maintenance Reserve Fund. All interested persons and citizens shall have the opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place of order.
Thank you, Carol. I make a motion to open the floor to public comments. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone have comments on the funding of the Maintenance Reserve Fund? I will just say that we are placing $30,000 into a building maintenance fund. We've already put $45,000 into that fund through the budget this year. I agree with this, and that the building maintenance fund should be built, so I'm going to vote in favor later in the meeting.
So this is, so this is, so we did the 45, and this is the 30s in addition to?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure everybody's clear.
So it'll be 75 till this year. Anyone have comments on that? So I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. So I call to order the regular meeting. We will approve minutes.
On behalf of Supervisor Whitten, a move that we town board approved the minutes from the January 9th, 2024 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A move that we approve the February 5th, 2024 minutes for the executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the February 6th, 2024 minutes for the executive session. Is there a second? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a move that we approve the February 9th, 2024 executive session minutes. Is there a second? And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to open the floor to public comment. This is only on agenda items. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
My name is Melissa Karsmer. I am the secretary to the highly superintendent, and I appreciate the microphone. I especially appreciate the outpouring of overwhelming support that I have gotten on this particular issue that's related to me for discrimination and harassment. And as many of you know, I don't usually get up to the microphone, I'm usually found in the back taking notes, supplying my boss the information that he asks for, giving him the facts. And that's exactly what I plan to do tonight for the town board. The first thing is easy. When discussing and voting tonight about my, making my pay whole again, you won't have to look very far for the money. It's already in the 2024 budget. The discussion was already had, the vote was passed, the decision was already made. My $25 and 30 cents an hour can be found in the adopted printed budget. The second thing has to do with the fact that something like this is unprecedented. This has never happened to any highway employee ever in the history of the Town of Clinton Highway Department. No pay, no number of hours have ever been taken away from an employee. In fact, just the opposite happens. Usually, a highway employee is promised an increase in pay, and at the town board meeting, a resolution would be passed, and then the monies are retroed back to that employee. However, instead, for me, I came to work for a couple of days in January, and I was expecting my new pay amount, the amount that was based on the past budget. But then, just before payday, Mike Whitten took the money away from me. He literally took food out of my mouth, and to that, I say, is cool. The third and the final fact is the research and justification on my pay has already been done. It was done for the budget meetings, and it was determined that $25 and 30 cents an hour was a fair pay rate. We had researched other highway departments, and we found that they're ones that were similar to the Town of Clinton. Those highway departments had the same amount of road miles, they had the same amount of highway employees, and they had a similar budget that needed to be managed by our department. What was found was that $25 and 30 cents an hour is a comparable rate. It's not the highest in the circle of towns, but it's at least fair. So the decision tonight to restore my pay that was approved should not be a political decision, a Democrat versus a Republican, but rather, it should be a right versus a wrong decision. Thank you.
Anyone else on the agenda?
Mr. Chanezi, now's the time.
It's not on the agenda, but.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, let him do it anyway.
I thought it was on the agenda, Mike. If I'm wrong, or?
One on nine years.
Oh.
Let him talk.
Thank you. I jumped again.
You forgot what you wanted to say, right?
I remember, I have readings with them.
Hello again, for those of you who didn't, weren't here when I spoke at a turn, because I didn't know it was my turn, I'll start all over again. My name is Ralph Chanezi. I've been living on Longview Road and Story Lane since 1968, '07, and my family has earned, has owned land since 1963. My family and I and other members of my family, we've owned five houses and purchased the sixth over the years. All of us use Longview Road and Pumpkin Lane. The intersection of Longview Road and Pumpkin Lane is about as dangerous as I want to talk about. I can't tell you how many times I've been clipped or close to being clipped from people driving on Pumpkin Lane, many of them going like a bat out of heck, not realizing that we can't see you coming down that road because there's a dip, and there's no way you're going to repair it without spending tens of thousands of dollars. There's no reason why the town, if we have to contact the county, let's do that, and let's get a stop sign put up because it's dangerous. And if you're waiting for someone to get killed, well, then that's going to be a problem. I know for a fact that the Richards who live on my road were hit there many years ago with their children in the car. Nothing was done then, and you people haven't done, not blaming you guys, but you need to get off your chairs and do something about it. Because I was almost clipped again two weeks ago, and it's not the first time, okay? People drive up that road really fast, and there's a lot of people that are moving up here that think they're still in Brooklyn, or Manhattan, or Long Island. They're not. You're living in Clinton Corners now. You need to respect the speed limits, and you need to watch yourself coming through these, where stop signs should be put, and you people need to get off your chairs and take care of it. And thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ralph. Anyone else on the agenda? Do you don't have to raise, you can just come on. Hello, Bruce.
Hi, my name is Bruce Martin. If no one doesn't know me, I've worked for the Highway Department for thirty-four years, and I'm here tonight. I'm asking for the Town Board to help me out. I'm trying to retire. I've got the years in, but not the age. So I'm asking this Town Board to do an amendment to the contract, please, so I can retire. I'm the longest employee of this town, highway, Town Hall. I'm not asking for much, so if you could please help me out, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone on the agenda? On the agenda? Lynn.
I am going, Lynn Tompkins, Center Road, original Highway Secretary. I am speaking on behalf of Melissa and any Highway Secretary that comes in. I worked here twenty-six years. I always got a raise, and I can remember two years in a row with an added to five cents, okay? She puts in extra hours that you guys may not know about. I would come in and I would call one of, Bruce can swear to this, all of a sudden they'd hear my voice on the radio, because somebody called me at home. And the only way that I used to be able to keep in touch with these guys was via radio in the office. She deserves a raise. To take it away after giving it to her when it's been adopted is ridiculous, and I am really ashamed of you, to be honest. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Lynn.
Ross Tompkins, my wife gave me permission to speak right here. And I welcome all you people that moved here in the sixties. I started here in forty-seven, forty-four in this town. Clinton Avenue, at home, born there. What, what I see here tonight is, item number three, discussed resolution, approve motions. Now, I hope the motions are conducive to what I would like to see. Obviously, you all saw me the last meeting, and I kinda took you to task for what I thought was an unfair way to handle this situation. So I know you're gonna, after the public discussion, you're gonna work on motions, and like I say, I hope the motion is to restore the pay raise that was in the, in the budget for the Highway Secretary or Clerk, whatever you wanna call her. I think it was unconscionable to put it in and remove it. So I hope that's one of the motions, and if it isn't, then I'll be talking afterwards when it's open for everything.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Denji, I'm speaking on behalf of Melissa. I've been watching the cable thing you guys have on TV from home for the last couple months, and one of the things made me squirm in the chair, Mike, when you said that she was overqualified. If you can get somebody overqualified today to do her job and for what you're paying, that's a gift. That's a gift to any business, any town. I had a, I had a little conversation with Melissa, never met her before, I sat down and talked to her. This girl's got a four-year degree. It's, it's an asset to the town. She works on Saturday. Who are you gonna get to work on Saturday? I have fifteen employees. It's hard enough to get people to work on Saturday. For you to take this raise from her is unbelievable. I mean, just like taking something out of your mouth. I would never do that to one of my employees, 'cause they would probably quit. If you lose her, you've done a disjustice to the town. So I wish you would reconsider this, 'cause I don't think it's gonna be good in your next election if you don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? Anyone else on the agenda item? All right, I close, I move to close the...
Another one coming.
Todd.
Todd Martin, Highway Superintendent. In the Town Hall complex here, we have a full-time secretary to the Town Supervisor. We have a full-time planning and zoning secretary next door, Arlene. We have a part-time building inspector or building secretary that just came on board. We have two secretaries for the court over there. We have a full-time Town Clerk, a deputy Town Clerk, and a part-time Clerk downstairs, that's three. In the Highway Department, I have a secretary for thirty-two hours a week. The biggest revenue of this town is the Highway Department. That lady's responsible for most of the revenue here in the Town of Clinton. To take her pay raise away, it's unfathomable. I just couldn't imagine. The amount of hours that she's done, she's never been written up, she's never been late to work, she's never been disciplined in or anything else. I mean, it just prays for her all the way around. I mean, without her, basically, the Highway Department and the office would stop as far as payroll and paying bills and everything else. She's on top of that. I'm asking the Town Board to reinstate her pay raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else on the agenda? All right, I move to close the public discussion and return to regular order of business.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm gonna pass my comments tally.
Okay, I'm, I'm reading these on behalf of Supervisor Whitten. Clinton Town Offices, Highway Department, Justice Court, Office and Court will be closed for Presidents' Day holiday on Monday, the February nineteenth. The Clinton Camino Library will also be closed on that day. Second, Town of Clinton has experienced banking fraud in an amount of ninety-five hundred dollars. This happened in five transactions of nineteen hundred dollars each in quick, in quick succession. We have shut down the account that was compromised and opened a new account. Additionally, extra precautions have been added to our accounts to prevent this from happening again. Unfortunately, this is the world we live in. We are working to apprehend the culprit and recover the money that was taken. I want to thank all involved with resolving this issue, and there are many, especially Tori Houlihan, Van Ostrin and Houlihan are bookkeepers for her quick actions in regard to this fraud. Third, all exemption applications are due by March first. Common local tax exemptions adopted by the town include senior citizen, alternative veterans, I'm sorry, alternative veterans, disabled with limited incomes, and ag exemptions. If you disagree with the assessment of your property, after reviewing the ten of assessed value established on or about May first of each year, you may file a complaint on real property assessment form by the town's grievance day, which is the fourth Wednesday after the fourth Tuesday in May. The Board of Assessment Review, a separate board consisting of five residents of the town appointed by the Town Board, will make a determination on each property, on each properly filed complaint. Grievance and further judicial review may be pursued if the decision of the B A R does not meet the requested assessment reduction. If you have any questions for the assessor, please call eight four five two six six five eight five three, extension six, and then press one. Please leave a message and your call will be returned. Next, I'm signing a letter on behalf of the Town Board, supporting the Clinton Historical Society in its pursuit of a grant opportunity. Grant is part of the National Park Service's semi-quintcentennial grant program. Two hundred and fifty years, if I'm not mistaken. Two hundred and fifty years. To restore the interior and update the mechanical systems in the Historic Creek Meeting House, the project will replace an outmoded oil furnace with an efficient heat pump, heating system, and install insulation and storm windows for the first time. And last comment, we are at the beginning of the Hometown Heroes Project. The mission of the Hometown Heroes Project is to place banners honoring veterans, either living or not, who have served in any branch of the armed forces. Whether in times of war or peace, veterans and their families devote their lives to the service of our country and the ideals we hold dear. The sacrifices they make are without parallel. In terms, in times of war, veterans put their lives on the line to protect our freedoms, many of whom have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Councilman Dykes will be forming a committee for this project soon. Charlie, wanna...
Yeah, thank you, Elliot. I've always admired driving through Fishkill and Rappin' Gears and Hopell Junction, and to some degree Salt Point, looking at the pictures of our veterans and loved ones. And I always wondered why we didn't do this in Clinton. I'm sure we've got veterans. So I'm gonna form it with Mike's permission and add, add hot committee. I see a couple of them sitting in the office in the room. I don't know who they are yet. To explore this possibility, I've looked at some of the information on the web. The program appears to be self-funding, where it's a family wants to have their relative up on a picture, they fill out a form, provide some evidence that he was, did indeed serve, and there's a fee which I assume covers the photography and the actual poster, and then we work with Central Hudson to mount it on the appropriate telephone calls. I assume we will put this on the, on the agenda for next month, open for public comments if anybody has anything to say. Otherwise, in the meantime, I will pursue this committee and start to make some minor moves in that direction.
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Town Board Report, Councilperson Russell.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the C A C. The C A C is very excited. They have a brand-new website. It's W W W dot Clinton C A C dot com. It is the home of the C A C and the C S C, which is a Climate Smart Task Force. It has pages dedicated to both of these organizations, as well as a blog, which you'll find on a useful info in the navigation. It is divided into ca, the blog is divided into categories like wetlands, home and yard, climate change, et cetera, and in each category you'll find articles on those topics. There's one main photo gallery on the site and a few smaller ones on some of the blog pages. With each of the photo galleries, they provided an email for people to submit their own photos of the town on topics related to land, water, and wildlife, 'cause they would like to change the pictures on a regular basis, so it's just not a static website. So please check that out and submit your photos. The site was built by a new C A C member, Jen Brown, with guidance and oversight from Barbara Mansell and Margaret Pierpont. Jen and Barbara have met with Arlene and Carol, and with, so it is live. Go check it out when you have a chance. The other thing that came up during the meeting was, and this is more, well, it's informational for everyone, but a heads up very much to my fellow members of the Town Board. The D E C is implementing a new law that will expand the number of wetlands regulated to further protect water quality and wildlife habitat. The attention, the intention is safeguarding an estimated one million additional acres of unprotected wetland habitat and regulate smaller wetlands of unusual importance, such as vernal pools. In doing so, the current D E C maps will become non-regulatory, meaning they can be used for informational purposes only. And it was great, because we had a planning board member and a Z B A member at that meeting, so it was a good discussion. Basically, we're prob, we are going to have to re-rate our existing zoning law provision regarding wetlands because of this change. So that's just a heads up to you guys, and we will discuss further as that comes to pass. Planning Board looked at variance, a lot line adjustment, two short-term rentals, and also worked on the site plan and, and use for Cornerstone. And the zoning board asked me, we have already accepted the resignation, but they wanted me to make note of, and say thank you, to Norma Dolan, who served on the Z B A for eighteen years. Right. So they wanted me to express their thanks and appreciation and let everyone know that that's a long-serving member. And they, the zoning board had a area variance at their past meeting. And as part of my report, I would like to say to everyone, just a reminder, that the people that serve on these boards are volunteers. These two boards especially require a lot of time and a lot of homework, and I respectfully ask that anyone that comes to any meetings or any public hearings with these boards be respectful and polite, regardless of how they feel about the subject or what's going on. I have a feeling I'm gonna become a broken record in this regard, but I just, a gentle reminder, everyone, that they are giving hours of their life to this town out of the goodness of their hearts, so.
Thank you.
That's all my stuff.
Thank you very much. Charlie, any report? Do you want a new highway?
The highway report, can I have library or report?
The highway center report, did you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you do that, while I'll have to, I'm gonna have to find it.
The library report. On March fifth, the library will begin accepting donations for their spring book sale. Donations will be accepted on Tuesdays and Fridays from twelve-thirty to four-thirty P M. Saturdays from nine-thirty A M. to twelve-thirty P M. or by appointment. Donation guidelines will be posted on the library's website, and items must be clean, current, and in good condition.
I don't think I saw the email.
If you wouldn't wanna pick it up and buy it, don't donate it. The Friends Group is also looking for volunteers to help with the book sale and plant sale, which will be held May sixteenth to nineteenth. Please contact the library if you are interested, and they will put you in touch with Nancy Drago, head of the Friends.
All right. Thank you.
I do have highway report, my mistake.
Yep.
Dated January thirty-first, Town of Clinton Highway Department, let me take this down. Storms, there were a total of ten weather-related days this month. Magic salt mixture has been used for a few storms. The Hyundai loader, Hyundai loader was used to mix the organic matter into the salt, and the roads were pre-treated before the storm. P T Highway workers have been, have been a great help with keeping the town complex open and clear on these winter roads. I'm hesitating to read this, 'cause it's very small print. Cold patch work took place on various roads this month. Winter weather and plowing required maintenance work to be done on all the roads. Dirt patch work was done on many of the roads. When the plow scrapes the snowway, it also removes some of the road material as a regular maintain, and regular maintenance is required. Road shoulder repair work was done on Browning Road. Material was trucked in, and the highway crew helped spread the material. Wood chipper was used for chipping brush and tree cleanup. The wind and severe weather in January caused many large branches and trees to be compromised. Bucket truck was borrowed from Reinbeck through the shared services agreement for a couple of days to take down the Christmas lights around the Town Hall complex. Stop sign installation is still in review for the corner of Pumpkin Lane and Longview Road. Good to hear that, huh? Duchess County will perform a data-driven traffic control for that intersection in the spring, which will save us some money in having not to hire an outside consultant. Snow markers are installed, and as a reminder, please be sure all vehicles are removed from town roads to help with the efficiency of snow removal by the Highway Department. All town residents are allowed to take two five-gallon pails of salt, sand, or the mix with each storm for use on the driveway and around our home. Respectfully, Todd Martin. Thank you.
Charlie?
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Building Department, activity was a little slower than it was the previous month, perhaps expected because of the time of the year. Eight building permits issued, twenty-one C Os and C Cs issued, six title searches. Total cost of construction, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight Rec Committee met on January twenty-ninth, the last Monday of the month. From Dan Harkenreider, this is comments, we hope to reschedule our skating party at Friends Park if we ever get the weather we need. We have begun our two thousand twenty-four Banners Up fundraising program. Also, this is at Friends Park. Please contact the Recreation Department if you would like to have a banner for your business displayed on the outfield fence of the baseball diamond. Proceeds will go toward improving the... Proceeds will go toward improving the playground and installing tennis and pickleball courts. Third item, anyone looking to rent a pavilion at Fran Mark Park may check the Recreation Calendar to see the dates that are available. And fourth item, summer camp dates for 2024. Session 1, July 8 to 12. Session 2, July 15 to 19, excuse me, 19. Session 3, August 5 to 9. Session 4, from August 12 to 16. Registration information will be posted soon on the website. And in general, check out the rec calendar and rec website on the town's home, uh, town's webpage, rather, for recreation updates. The next meeting will be on Monday, the 29th of February, here at Town Hall at 7 o'clock. And of course, it's open to the public, as all these meetings are. Okay. Town of Clinton CAC Task Force met on the 30th of January, which was actually rescheduled from the 23rd due to, due to bad weather. There were half a dozen people present. Much of the discussion revolved around the task force's work toward getting bronze, uh, bronze certification and assessing where they, where they stand in terms of getting the information together to submit to Cornell and other groups, reviewing agencies. Anticipated submittal date is on or before the 4th of April. And following topics in that context were discussed. Status of the Government Operations Climate Action Plan, Natural Resources Inventory, which is a major undertaking that the group has done, which has actually been completed and will be presented here at the Town Board Meeting in sometime early this year. A major discussion with Todd and Melissa about the town vehicle fleet inventory, and that is almost completed. An overview of a recent tour of the town garage, which is a source of greenhouse gas emissions, and a need for an assessment by an expert in doing so in order to write grant proposals to generate funding, to complete actions, make the garage, the highway garage more energy-efficient. Road street and crossing inventory, which we heard about, I think, a few meetings ago where a gentleman came and spoke to us about it. Whether or not the task force needs to accept the plan as part of its documentation for this bronze, the bronze status. Discussion of the Climate Resilient Hazard Mitigation Plan, which I believe Catherine Wright is working on for the county. Is that the same thing that, it's not the same thing?
No.
Well, okay.
What Karen's asking us to work on is a, is a flood, a disaster, flood, flooding disaster plan.
Okay, I thought that was hazard mitigation, my mistake. Anyway, there is a hazard mitigation plan in progress, accounting-wide plan, which these folks are working on and providing information for. And then, of course, discussion about public outreach and engagement, which is obviously very important, as it always is, and social media. Terms of future planning, besides the National Resource Inventory, the task force will also pursue a reperion buffer planning slash planting project, which will take place later this year. And the next meeting over Masonic Hall will be on Tuesday, February 27th, 7 o'clock, and again, open to the public for anybody who's interested in attending. And last but not least, a report from the zoning officer. Kind of taking this one on the fly, because somebody didn't quite give me enough time to look it over, but anyway, I don't know who that was. I'm not mentioning any names. Three complaints he dealt with, this is during the month of January, three complaints dealt with Deer Ridge Drive, Center Road, and Slate Quarry Road. He handled various inquiries, one of them was from Councilman Missdella on Town of Clinton Wetlands Protections. Also, an inquiry from a prospective buyer on Browning, property on Browning Road, dealing with agricultural event, venues. No orders of violation or orders to remedy, however, there were four cases where he was working toward compliance with various homeowners or property owners, and actually, I think those are much more time-consuming than simply issuing a violation or issuing an order to remedy, which is a fairly straightforward process. These are very complicated, very time-consuming negotiations that take place sometimes over a series of months, or certainly weeks. Anyway, four of those, there was Mallway Avenue over on Lymph Road, property, actually, Black Snake Farm over on North Creek Road, property on Lake Drive, and a property on Willow Lane. Three planning board items to mention, the public hearing for Cornerstone, which was here in this room last week. Again, Willow Lane and a permit application, a wetlands permit application on Willow Lane, rather, I'm sorry, and a non-hosted short-term rental application on Kansas Road. And various appeal items dealing with variances and other actions on Hollow Road. Building permits, 10 building permits reviewed, and two short-term rental inspections, one under one on Kansas Road that I mentioned before, and an apparent violation of a short-term rental on. So that was a report that was submitted by CEO Jeff Newman, who spoke, spoke here just a little while ago.
Thank you, Elliot. Well, business, we will move on to the farm law, which we had a public hearing on earlier. Do you have anything to add to that, Elliot or Jeff?
So you guys, you're gonna work on the edits, but they're mostly
They're minor stylistic kinds of things, they're not substantive. Jeff sent me a Word file, so I will tinker with that over the course of the next few days and get it back. So there'll be plenty of time to look at it before the next meeting.
And are those, the, um, applications, not the right word? What's the right word?
Yeah.
That's gonna be part of it, and we're gonna prove that as well, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just so I got.
You're talking about the form that came out?
Yeah, the annual farm informational permit.
Yeah, I'll look at that too, yes.
All right. Number two on the agenda is Elliot.
Okay, I'll, on behalf of Town Supervisor, I remove that Town Board approves a farm resolution, number, number blank of 2024, authorizing, directing, and empowering the Town Supervisor to appropriate and transfer $30,000 from the Town's General Fund Surplus to the Building Repair and Maintenance Reserve Fund, and to take such other actions necessary to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Number three, Catherine.
So I just want to make a couple of comments that apply to the next four resolutions that I ask to be put on the agenda. I ask that these be put on the agenda because I want each thing to be addressed individually, as opposed to as a, a group in resolution number one. I also ask because I don't think I adequately explained the changes that were done in salary, so I want to go through it once more so that everyone's very clear and transparent. And I want to give all the board members a chance to vote on each of these items by themselves. And before we get any further, I also want to say, my, these resolutions and the requests that I am making, in no way, all of our employees do a fantastic job, and that is not what these conversations are about.
Mm-hmm.
That's, there we go. So I'd like to make motion that the Town Board approves a change in the hourly wage for the Secretary to the Highway Superintendent from 2233 per hour to 2530 per hour for 32 hours per week, effective January 1st of 2024. May I have a second?
Second.
So the 2023 salary for the Highway Secretary was $21.63. The 2024 salary that was adopted by the majority of the last year's board was 2530. That is a big increase. It is a 14% increase. That is because we needed to true-up or make her salary where it should be. The majority of the prior Town Board felt that the Secretary to Highway Superintendent and the Secretary to the Supervisor have very similar duties and similar amounts of responsibility. So that was why that was done. I will not go through the other salaries of local Highway Secretaries, because Melissa already covered that, so thank you for that, but that is in line, the 2530 an hour is in line with other local Highway Secretaries with similar numbers of miles of roads and all those metrics that you would apply to a highway department. The salary that was proposed on January 3rd in resolution, well, that was voted on on January 3rd is $22, $22.33, which is an increase from the 2023 salary of 3%. And I don't think I made that clear. So as I said, I just want it to be very, all above board, so everyone knows what they're voting on and understands. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I have one thing that'll take me a while, 'cause I speak slow. This is on my, me saying it, though.
Yep. Okay, so, the budget goes through three phases. First phase is a tenet of budget, which is made by the Town Supervisor. Changes are then made by the whole board. The tenet of budget, created by me, contained all of the changes that have been approved by the board. These are changes made on a monthly basis to the budget by all Town Boards throughout New York State for a very long time, and this board is no different. The biggest issue is the hourly rate of the Secretary to the Highway Superintendent. To start with, there has been no cut to this hourly rate. There is an increase of 3.25%, as Catherine pointed out, just like the Highway Superintendent and all highway workers, along with most employees of the town. A few employees received an increase greater than 3.25%, either because they were promised by previous boards to a greater increase, or because the board was still fixing rates that were frozen in years past. The position of Town Supervisor is receiving a rate lower than the previous board decided on. In four years since the current Secretary to the Highway Superintendent was hired, there has been an increase in wages of 64% and hours of 220%. If the higher rate were to go through, this would result in a total increase of 100.4% over four years. In that same time, the average employee received an increase of 22.4%. No additional duties have been added to the position of Secretary to the Highway Superintendent by Dutchess County Human Resources during that time.
Yeah. I'll do it here.
Okay. I'll read this too. Yeah, skip that. Much has been, okay, this is another one we'll, we'll be voting on, but I'll mention it here. Much has also been made of the change to the Town Supervisor position. This will be the next resolution.
Do you want to wait?
No, it has to do with that.
Okay. Town Supervisor received an increase in hours worked, but no increase in pay. This results in an actual cut in wages for the Town Supervisor. This also makes it possible for the Town Supervisor to receive health insurance, just like the Secretary to the Highway Superintendent. Also, like the Secretary to the Highway Superintendent, the Town Supervisor, Town Supervisor has opted not to receive health insurance. This can change for either position by the person who performs those duties if there is a life change. Do we read this?
I'll do this part.
Go ahead.
I would like to compare the Highway Superintendent to similar-sized towns, 'cause it's been mentioned. Clinton has 38.8 square miles and a population of 4,065, with nine employees and a clerk or secretary to the highway, which has 32 hours. Stanford has 50.2 square miles, a population of 3,692, only five employees, and a secretary to the highway of 20 hours. Armenia has 43.6 square miles, a population of 308, 3,835 employees and a secretary of 15 hours. And Yunnan Vale, which has 37.8 square miles, only within one mile of Clinton, a population of 4,574, about 500 more than Clinton, has four employees and no secretary to the highway. So in conclusion, the Secretary to the Highway Superintendent is receiving a wage increase of 3.25% this year, like most of their employees. I agree with this increase, as does, as does the majority of this board that was elected by the voters of Clinton.
Well, let's have the vote tonight.
Yep.
I appreciate that you got those metrics as well, but I mean, there's, you, we can, as I, as Melissa stated earlier, there is plenty of towns with similar amounts of employees and my number of miles of road and amount of budget that's handled, that if you pay, if you give her 2233 an hour, she is still underpaid. So, you know, it's, it's which towns you pick, but I like the fact that the ones that we were quoting have all those three, all those things in common with us. Similar number of employees, similar amount of budget. But I think it's time, unless anybody else has something to contribute.
No, I'd like a roll call on all four motions.
Okay.
So I, as Town Supervisor, the first motion, vote no. Councilperson Missdella?
I vote aye.
Councilperson Dykes?
No.
Councilperson Werner?
No.
Councilperson Nospitz?
Aye.
Second motion, make it. Motion doesn't pass.
Okay. I would like to make motion that Town Board approves a change in the Supervisor's position from full-time to part-time, at 22 hours per week, for an annual salary of $39,521, effective January 1st, 2124. Did you have more comments, or you already read them? Okay.
I'll second that.
May I have a second? Thank you, Carol, appreciate the help. Thank you, Elliot. So discussion.
You want to go first?
I have nothing else.
What, what are the changes here we're talking about?
Putting the Supervisor position back to part-time.
Back to part-time?
Mm-hmm.
And lowering his hours?
Well, part-time is 22 hours.
Okay.
The part, it was previously 22 hours, it was changed to full-time on January 3rd.
With no change in the salary.
No change in salary?
No.
Or added benefits?
That's true.
Catherine, you want to go first?
Yeah, well, the roll call, the same.
Well, I have a few things to say.
Oh, yeah.
That's all right. And I think Elliot does as well, is why you're asking.
No, all right.
Soon so.
Sit back.
So there's no other town in the area with a similar population, similar population that has a full-time Supervisor. And I would add, and this is, and I will be perfectly clear and honest and transparent, that this, his salary is higher than any surrounding town with a similar population. But that salary was voted on by the majority of last year's board, so I'm not saying that that's not as it should be, but Mr. Dykes brought that up at the last meeting, Supervisor salaries, and $39,521 is $19,000 more than the closest Supervisor.
But it's also $20,000 below the average of a Town Supervisor in New York State, and that would include Mylan and every town less than this. So $59,000 is the average salary of a Town Supervisor in the state of New York. You can Google it, look it up.
I'm sure you're absolutely correct, correct, but Stanfordville, that Mr. Whitten referenced recently with the Highway Secretary, had a population of 3,800. That part-time Supervisor makes $19,500. That part-time supervisor makes $19,500. Town of Washington, with a population greater than ours of 4,741, that part-time supervisor makes $20,879. So I would certainly not, certainly not argue with your facts. I don't think they're particularly relevant to our town and our county.
Agreed, but we're not changing the salary either.
No, but it's relevant.
So, we are only speaking at town board now.
I only brought.
No, we are.
I only brought up salary because I feel it's relevant to the discussion, not because it's something that's being discussed to be changed. The only thing in the motion is to put it down, to put us back to part-time supervisor. I feel changing a part-time position to a full-time position is saddling the town with something forever. But Elliot has something that he can also ask to contribute to the discussion.
My view of this is a very personal one. Putting these various numbers aside, well, from Charlie and also from Catherine. Michael was out sick for three months last year, and I was deputy supervisor, so I was called in, I was called on to step in. And I can tell you from being here that this is not N-O-T capitalized. This is not a part-time job. Okay? Anybody who says, "Anybody!" Ah, ah, you had your say and you'll have it later. This is the town board time. This is the town board time.
So, please just hold on a second.
Exactly. There's a public discussion at the end. Thank you, Russell. You can speak up at the public discussion, but I can tell you that I was here, I didn't see anybody else here, I was here trying to do the job that Ray had done for how many years and Michael had done, and I can tell you, and my wife can attest to the fact because I was never home. I was here. And anybody who tells me this is a part-time job has no idea what they're talking about, try to do it for a while and then tell me it's a part-time job. It's not. The least we can do is give benefits to the town supervisor. He's not getting more money. Give him benefits. He deserves the benefits.
Well, hang on a second. Hang on though. But wait a second, because Michael has said he's not taking the benefits.
I understand that, but he has the option. He does have the option.
Right. So, since speaking of that, Mike, are you able or willing to say here that you are not going to take those benefits for the rest of your term?
So, no. That's a personal thing, but, I mean, you're asking me to predict what happens in the next 22 months. I can't. Right now, I'm not the highways, the secretary to the highway, who also makes 32 hours a week, is N.O.T. So, I'm not, right now.
For this, yes, at this moment?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Did you want to, you said you wanted to do a roll call?
Yeah, I'm doing a roll call, but I want to make sure everybody spoke.
So, we're voting on you having full-time, full-time status?
Yes.
With no increase in salary?
No, 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 no. It's the other.
Well, we're voting on whether I go to, the town supervisor, not me, goes to 22 hours.
Got you.
Roll call vote. Town supervisor votes no.
Discussion.
Afterwards, at the end.
Well, there was a time, there was.
There was a discussion before of everything on the agenda.
You could have spoken.
You could have spoken.
Yeah.
We asked everyone.
No, unfortunately, the way it works, for better or worse, is that the first public comment is on things on the agenda, so had you wanted to speak to the, to this motion, you would have, you could have come up at that time. You were certainly welcome to come up at the end as well and share your thoughts or feelings, but that was the time for items on the agenda, to speak before we address them.
Thank you, Catherine. Roll call vote. Supervisors votes no. Councilperson Missella?
Yes.
Councilperson Dykes?
No.
Councilperson Nellie, uh, Werner?
No.
Councilperson Osbit?
No.
Motion does not carry.
Okay. Next, I make a motion that the town board approves a change in the hourly wage for the secretary to the town supervisor from $26.50 per hour to $25.30 per hour for 40 hours per week effective January 1st, 2024. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So this is another, I'm asking to put it back to what was approved by the previous, the majority of the previous town board. So, the supervisor secretary was paid $24.50 in 2023. The adopted salary was $25.30 an hour for an increase of 3.2%, which is what the majority of town employees got, is 3.2%. On January 3rd, it was changed to $26.50 an hour, which is a raise of 4.53%. As was mentioned, I feel a bit for Ms. Gallagher because, as the story goes, she was hired with the understanding that this is the wage that she would make. But it didn't happen because that is not a wage that we could pay. And while I empathize with that, I don't see why she should get a farther, a larger raise than anybody else since her salary is comparable to other supervisor secretaries in the area. Anybody else?
Anyone?
I'll say, do you want to say something?
No, I'm done.
I understand where my colleague is coming from. I said, as I said at the budget hearings, and still feel very strongly, not only about this position, but also about the one we'll be discussing next. This position is integral to the town and the functioning of the town supervisor's office, and I felt at the time, and still do, that the extra increase is warranted. Without detracting from anybody else or what anybody else is doing, I believe that this position deserves the extra increase.
Now, I'm gonna speak also. I will say that my office and the town clerk are the only offices that deal with the whole town. Everyone else is a single department, so.
Wait, can you clarify? Because the highway deals with the entire town, but I don't think that's what you meant.
They deal with the highway. They don't deal with the courts, do they?
Okay, I think I understand your point.
Are we ready to vote?
Sure.
The supervisor votes no. Councilperson Missella?
Yes.
Councilperson Dykes?
No.
Councilperson Werner?
No.
Councilperson Osbit?
No.
Motion does not carry.
All right. Last one. And again, this is just so that everyone understands what happened and can, and it's clear to the residents. So, I make a motion that the town board approves a change in the hourly wage for the deputy, deputy town clerk, deputy vital statistics registrar, registrar, from $24.21 per hour to $22.78 per hour for 16 hours per week effective January 1st, 2024.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So, the deputy town clerk in the 2024 adopted budget was given a 3.2% raise. Her 2023 salary was $22.06 per hour. The 2024 adopted salary was $22.78 per hour, again, for 3.2% raise. On January 3rd, she was given an additional amount of money, is $24.21 per hour, for a 5.91% raise. And I just want that to be very clear, that she was given 5% over, she and Kathy Gout, she and the highway supervisor, excuse me, she and the secretary to the supervisor are both given larger raises than anyone else.
Any other discussion?
I'll simply repeat what I said a minute ago. I think the position is an important one, very important one, and the extra, the additional increase is warranted.
Roll call vote. Supervisor votes no. Councilperson Missella?
Yes.
Councilperson Dykes?
No.
Councilperson Werner?
No.
Councilperson Osbit?
No.
Motion does not carry. So, we will move on now to the fee schedule. So, I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be resolved that the town board approves the resolution number of 2024, the revised fee schedule.
Second.
Discussion. I asked each department head to think about items on the fee schedule that should change. I received two items from the highway department. Those are changing from $150 to $200, and are the roadwork permit underground and the work permit other than underground. I believe, Councilperson Dykes, you had another change, or maybe not?
I don't see the fee schedule here, friend.
It is, well, no. Only the changes to the highway were made, were included, but do you have others?
My, I went to two items at the end. Cremation, $750.
No, it's not. It's $250 for cremation.
Hmm. We're in the cremation business.
Cremation burial is $250.
Okay.
No, no, no.
No, no. No, there's a burial and then cremation.
Well, funeral home does do cremation.
Okay.
And they send us the ashes and we, we get $250 for the.
It was $750 per cremation?
No.
No.
Full burial is $750.
Okay.
And cremation is $250.
$250.
And that's, that's for the town. That goes into the cemetery fund.
Okay.
The funeral home charges whatever they charge.
All right, I will, I will go where I wanted to go with that.
All right.
That's okay.
So.
Good idea.
Any other discussion?
We want to consider a senior discount across the board on our fees.
Well, for burials?
At the point we get to cremation, I don't think it matters much, but.
There is a senior tax exemption.
We want a senior discount across the board on all fees.
I would like, if you want to bring that, can you bring that?
Yeah.
To another meeting so we can have some time to think about.
Oh, yeah, but let's think about it. I mean, over 78, you know, 25% reduction in fees.
You have to look, we have to look very carefully at it because something like the, what's, the fees that was changing tonight, if it passes, like, you know, it's, if they mess up the road, it's what we need, the money we need to repair.
Sure. Well, we can vote on this and approve it as is.
All of them.
We can bring it up as another gen item next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Councilperson Missella?
So, I guess I have to, I'll read the resolution, but I'm not sure we're gonna be able to vote on it. Be resolved, the town board approves the town engineer CPL's proposal to design an evacuation plan for the town hall, masanacol, schoolhouse, library, and highway garage as per the proposal dated February 8th, 2024, at a cost not to exceed $5,500. So as you all aware, I've been working on what I call the fire drill plan for the town complex.
Yeah.
And the problem that I've come up against and has been, have been wrestling with on and off is since, for months now, it has been, is we need the, we need the maps of how to get out, just like you might see in a hotel. And I got, we scanned all the plans of, that we have, which was great and will be of use later, but I'm not able to manipulate them. We went to Minuteman, I went to Minuteman Press at Carol's suggestion, and they said they could help, but it's still too complicated to make a clear picture without too many, too much extraneous information that's on the plans, but you don't want on your evacuation plan. So I spoke to CPL engineering on a conference call for a little while, and they designed evacuation plans for the town of Wapengers. And there's an example in your packet. They're very nice, neat plans. They would be one in each office so that each office would know how to get out. Part of the price includes mapping out where the fire extinguishers are and where the AEDs are. So I think it would be great, and we could laminate those and, and put them on the wall with something as simple as, as what's called teacher's tape, so it doesn't mar the wall, but it's not, doesn't have to be fastened or anything. But it is not an inexpensive proposition. So.
Is this the project that we did some work on together, the evacuation plan?
When we did the tour with Mike?
Yes.
Yes, that was the beginning of it. Mm-hmm. And then you've all read it, and it's been, it's been before the board. We didn't approve it yet because we're waiting on the evacuation plans. You know, there's a meeting place and there's.
Seems like, seems like an awful lot of money.
It does.
It, it does, but they're, they're an engineering firm, and we do have a lot of buildings and a lot of places, you know, so it complicates matters. You know, it's a night, it's, it's, it's a nice map with arrows. It's very clear. And like I said, if you want to, you want to table it and bring it back next month, that's, I understand. I just don't, I don't think we can go without it because it doesn't really make sense. And I, I'm just kind of out of, we're at a crossroads here.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, is there not a way to split it up, Catherine, that we could do some of the rooms that are fairly easy to evacuate and leave the difficult areas to them?
Yeah, but God forbid something actually happens and there's not a map at one place and there's a map at another. And I don't know that, I, it may be also, I mean, I can certainly ask and I'm happy to go back to them, but it may also be one of those things where when we start to cut it up, we're not going to save any money because it's faster for them just to do the whole and be done.
It just seems so.
I did, he did.
They're so open.
I did, yes. But I did say, you know, he said, "Well, we can come out and we can map out where the fire extinguishers are." No, no. No, no. We'll mark it up where everything is. You're not gonna, we're not gonna pay for you to come out and tell us where the fire extinguishers are.
Yeah.
But it's still $5,000, so.
So, I would say that I think the $5,000 is worth it, but I would table this for a month only to find the money, like, make sure we're getting it from the right place.
Okay. Actually, that's great because I was gonna ask if you could give us a revised budget with, because there's some other things that, that I'd like to see how, how you work those out. So that would be great.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
So we'll, you all, you received no second on this, so.
Oh, did I?
No, because we're, I would send it.
Sorry, well, I guess it's, it's a moot point now because we're not gonna vote on it.
Yeah.
All right. So, do you want me to move on, Michael?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I want to move into business. Also me. Be resolved that the town board approves Rania Engineering as the engineer to the planning board at the published rates. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, in background, our previous town engineer, Pete Sataro, has left his CPL and he is now at another firm. The planning board has a good relation, very good working relationship with Pete and would like to continue to use him for their work. He has given us, he has given them a quote, and the hourly rate is quite reasonable. I think it's either equal or less than what we pay for CPL. And there's in your packet a letter from Paul Thomas, the chair of that board. Would you like to hear from him in reference to this, or?
Well, it'd be good for them, so, yeah.
It'd be good for the public?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you want to come up and share, hello?
You summarized it very well. We, everybody knows Pete. We've worked with him for years. He's moved on to different firms. We would just like to add him to the roster of consultants that we use. We like working with CPL to keep them, they would continue on with projects they're already working on. Pete can also work on things that he started on at CPL, but we just, we want to have, we want to maximize the level of expertise that we have access to. we have access to, so that's really, really what we're looking for. And as Catherine said, the rates are essentially the same, so we hope you'll see it our way.
I would say too that the rates are paid by the applicant, so.
Absolutely should have said that.
So it doesn't come through the test. Yeah.
But it's good that we got a good rate.
No, it is.
But that's gross.
I agree. Thank you, Paul. Uh, I second it if we haven't just.
No, we did before. Um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approves the superintendent of highways request that the New York State Department of Transportation conduct a traffic signal warrant study of the town of Clinton intersection on State Route 9G and Hollow Road in the town of Clinton. The New York State DOT will notify the town of fundings and conclusion upon completion of this study.
Second.
Thank you, um.
And that is paid for by the state of New York?
Yes, by the NYAs Department of Transportation.
Okay.
No tax fare fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Um, I'm adding one thing that we, uh, did previously, but because of the fraud in our bank account, we are now opening another. As some of you know, my right hand doesn't always work, so, uh, I make a motion to approve the following resolution be resolved that the town board approves the town supervisor using a signature stamp. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, and the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, that is, any other items?
When are we bringing back the discussion about the stop sign at the end of Longview?
Uh, so it was brought up tonight in comments. I will do it next month again.
Well, because I, I just have additional information, so I wanted to know when it's gonna come back.
Then it can come back next month. Um, resignations and appointments? Oh, did you have enough?
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll move that, uh, we accept the resignation of Abby Wyand as winter, winter seasonal laborer effective February 2nd, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And three appointments. Uh, first, the appointment of Abby Wyand as the full-time laborer effective February 5th, 2024. Rate of pay as per the CSE contract for $1 less than the starting contract rate for 2024 of $19.25 per hour for a period of six months or 1,000 hours, with paid leave benefits as per the CSEA contract and full medical, eye, and dental coverage with an employee contribution of 15%. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, I'll move that we approve the appointment of Felicity Schaefer as building department clerk effective January 29th, 2024. Rate of pay $22.33 per hour for 20 hours per week. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
And discussion?
Yes, this is the candidate that, um, that not many of us could attend the interview, but this is who Mike Casenza was recommending? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the last appointment is for Daniel Vanderbrink as a member of the zoning board of appeals for a term of office February 13th, 2024 to December 31st, 2026, filling the unexpired time, uh, term rather of Norma Dolan, who resigned. Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Counselor Person Mustela.
Be resolved that the town board approves the February 15th general fund warrant vouchers numbered 30 through 99 totaling $38,545.95. And the February 15th highway fund warrant vouchers numbered 17 through 49 totaling May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, I have a motion to move funds on behalf of the town supervisor. Town board approves following resolution, uh, number X of 2024, a motion to move funds. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the supervisor's report from January 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, and the other announcements? Uh, we will open public discussion for anything related to the town. Uh, I make a motion to open the floor to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone want to speak?
As we know, four million new settlers are coming to the U.S. every year across the Canadian border, across the Mexican border, and hopscotching out to, uh, New York City and Poughkeepsie, New York, where they're residing in the hotel, right next to IBM Poughkeepsie site, which I find immensely amusing. Um, I'm wondering, do we have a plan for when they arrive in the town of Clinton for greeting them and housing them and dealing with them, and what plans we are making for their arrival? Thank you.
Anyone else? Break.
Ray over the Fiddler's Bridge Road. Come back with my two topics. What's the status of the generator for the town complex? We have heard a thing, money's gonna run out if you're gonna be using the federal funds in about a year or two, and if we don't start anything, we're still gonna be putting the safety of the residents at risk.
So I agree. Um, we are probably not using our money, but I did attend a meeting about grants on the federal level because local ones aren't working, so I have three or four options for federal grants now. I attended that meeting about two weeks ago.
Last time we talked about this, I recommend, I recollect that you were gonna get prices because the, our, our quotes were outdated.
So, yes, it's about 140 now instead of 125.
I only said 150.
Yeah, so.
Way back.
It's about 140 now. Yeah, but I'm working on grants, uh. Uh, no, no, it's not fun. Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing is, I hope in part of your design aspects, you get rid of the three meters and only have one electric meter and save around $2,000 to $3,000 a year for town.
I agree, and that's part of it.
Yeah, okay, the second one was the infamous Kansas Road. You were gonna do some sort of study analysis or decide to end it, call it a, uh, winter road or whatever.
We've had a series of meetings and discussions and Zoom calls and whatnot with, uh, Mark Long at CPL. Um, and Todd has been involved with this as well, as Michael and I. The plan at the moment, I believe is on Wednesday. Todd, is that right? Wednesday? I think we're, Wednesday, we're gonna meet. The three of us are gonna, and Michael, if he's available, are gonna meet on Kansas Road. Todd has a plan that, we do have a quote from CPL to do a three-phase project, which would cost something in the neighborhood of half a million dollars altogether. It seems like a bit much. Uh, now, you could do it in phases, of course, and it would be less, less problematic, but still, it's a lot of money. Todd has an idea for doing something much more modest that might actually solve the problem, or at least part of the problem, and he and I and Mark, and again, Michael, if he's available, are gonna meet out there at the site on Wednesday. We should have a resolution soon, but, you know, these things do take time, as you all know, but we are making progress. Baby steps. We're making baby steps. Well, gee, I hope not that long. Oh, you mean this coming March? I thought you meant that March. Oh, no, no, but we'll see. Maybe, maybe.
Are there issues with the residents on?
Well, that's part, we will have to, obviously, once we have a plan, we will need to talk with the residents and get their buy-in on it. So we have not done that yet because we want to have a plan first.
I know when we were campaigning and I commented on the condition of the road, the residents told me they love it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a, that's a bridge we'll need to cross at, at some point.
It's gonna be a white bridge.
It'll, yes, it will.
Anyone else on something related to the town?
Yeah, I'm gonna say something. Mrs. Mustela came up with some really good things before.
Can you use the mic?
I'm Ralph Chanezy.
Can you use the mic, Ralph?
Otherwise?
I'm Ralph Chanezy, and I spoke earlier and I'm gonna speak again. Catherine, Mrs. Mustela came up with some really good things about why certain people should get raises and why some of you shouldn't get raises, but all of you people got your raises, but this approved somebody else's. To me, it kind of sounds like, you know, political garbage.
She did get a raise.
No, she didn't.
Yeah, she did.
3.25.
She got 3.25%.
Yeah, but.
Which is what pretty much everybody in town got.
Compared to the hours that Mike's gonna get, compared to the hours his secretary was gonna get, which she works just hard. I'm sorry, but you people, you know, you all get elected, and I voted for every one of you people.
Thank you.
Every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're not getting another one. You especially.
Me especially? You need to be a little bit more respectful when it comes, you need to be a little bit more respectful.
Elliot, Elliot.
We come to, hey, I make 12, I make 12 cents an hour at this town. 12 lousy cents an hour is what I make from this town.
There is a, there is a provision in this book to have you, to have you removed from this roof. You do the work for a change and tell me how easy it is.
Elliot, stop. Stop it.
Uh, okay, Mike.
This is outrageous.
It is.
Now, let me, let me, let me, let me understand.
It's their time. It's their time to speak on lead.
I just want to say that I also get 3.25% increase, so.
All right. Anyone else?
I can't help, I get aggravated myself. Yeah, you're right.
I've been to these meetings when Jeff Burns was here. I've been to them when Ray was here, and I've never seen such craziness. Mike, you should be ashamed of yourself.
Okay.
Just the waste of money that you guys do, the waste. Now, tax dollars, I gotta say this. You want to spend five grand for an emergency plan that's on a piece of paper? I'll give you some samples. You can lay out the room yourself, put the red lines on it, and save the town five grand. Maybe give Melissa a raise. You got your raise, and you're gonna get your benefits, but I guarantee you will never get reelected. It's terrible what you're doing. I mean, there's people here that have lived in this town their whole lives. They're on social security. They don't have a retirement. There's people on the board that have moved to this area because they didn't like where they live. They didn't like the things going on there. They came here. I was having lunch in the store over here a couple of weeks ago, and the gentleman that had moved here said he moved here to save us. I didn't know what he meant. Okay? Start doing the right things. Town of Pleasant Valley, their supervisor is part-time. She makes 35 grand a year. Okay? You make more than that, and you want to be full-time, and you want the benefits. You hired a girl to be your secretary. Tell the people how much that cost. $55,000 a year plus the benefits. Those benefits are at least $30,000 a year. Okay? You're gonna get 38,000 or 39,000, and you're gonna get your benefits. There's another third. It may, it may require you to have more hours to do that job. Under your condition, maybe. But let's start doing the right things. I don't care whether you're Democratic, Republican. I don't care. And honestly, I did vote for you because I thought you did a great job when you were on the board with Jeff. Okay? But right now, you're not that same person, and you're not doing a good job. And Elliot, you ought to control your actions up there, too. You used to sit on the end, and you used to come up with some great ideas. The people here are pissed off. And when they're on their, their social security and they're, they're, you're getting 1,100 or 1,200 a month to live on, they're hoping you make the right decisions.
We are trying. It may not seem that way, but we are, we are trying very hard.
And you know what? Instead of passing stuff without talking to people and doing it under the slide, there's something wrong with that. I can't get away with that at work. You know, there's a movie that came out years ago, Spend Another People's Money. That was you doing.
And I just want to say one more thing.
Hold on.
I am a veteran, and I'm also a retired action officer, and I've done more for this country and this town and this state than all you people, not you, Catherine, I just, no disrespect.
You, you can say it. You'd be right. You can say it.
We're together.
You've done more than more for the country and the state?
That's right.
I got a 40-year career serving the federal government, Department of Defense and intelligence agencies.
Rob, please back off. Please sit down.
You're not gonna get anywhere.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm still Lynn. I just want to say something. It was mentioned up here that the highway clerk does not interact with the public as much as someone else. May I take umbrage to that? That is totally a misstatement. Perhaps you should visit over there, listen to the phone call. They usually meet the highway clerk after they've bought their property here because they want to put the driveway in and whatnot. She has as much interaction with the public as any other clerk in this department, in this whole complex. And to put that as a stroke against her, or as an excuse that she's not involved with the public as much as somebody else, was a misstatement, I hope, on the part of the person that said it. And I am still totally against your decision about the raise for Melissa, and I'm still ashamed.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else?
I'm not a wordsmith, but I tried making some notes. Well, I guess they don't want me to talk. So to begin with, gentlemen, I know it's hard when somebody says something inflammatory, but I'll remind you that you're sitting up there representing public, and you should have more control over your motions than the people in your audience. Be a better person. And I'm talking to Elliot and Charles. You don't react violently like you both have, so I'm asking you to be better than some of the people sometime in your audience.
You're right, Russell. I apologize.
You need to show more restraint. Now, you represent all the people in the town of Clinton. It doesn't matter what party we are. I don't think you represented the people tonight. For these people to show up as a hot-button issue. For these people to show up, it was a hot-button issue and a lot of people don't watch TV, don't know what's going on, but I think the majority of the people in the Town of Clinton would have disapproved of your actions tonight. One good thing about it is that I think the people that do watch and see this, consequences have, actions have consequences and that's what's showing tonight here. People showed up because they're pissed. One guy called me and spoke about Mike and said, after watching you on TV, he thought you were acting like a Nazi. And that was when you were disrespectful to Catherine and said, I move to move under robust rules. So people are seeing things and they're not happy with what they're seeing. You, you've got some years left in this office and I hope that you're going to learn from seeing what public opinion is. And I don't think that you're seeing all the people because they're not showing up. A lot of people don't, don't want to be involved. You just say, oh, the hell with it, let it go. But you're wrong tonight in all of the things you did, taking Melissa's salary raise away and you should have followed Kathy's lead. I'm sorry, you're all wrong if I'm going to start tonight.
Thank you, Allison.
My name is Jordy Scagnelli. I live at 16-story leaning. I was here and I complained. I started the problem with the stop signs and stuff. And I have to be honest with you, Melissa had spoken to me several times after that meeting. We had a meeting, which Michael knows because I spoke to him just the other day. We met on January 7th. We looked, Todd was also there, Melissa was there, they followed through on everything. There is a problem with that area. We, we talked about an engineer coming in, how we could get rid of the hump in the road and work together. We, I personally feel that it is a lot more reasonable for the Town of Clinton to have stop signs and also warning signs, that there is a stop sign that you're coming upon. I was informed that having an engineer come is quite an expense. That expense can be used for our town in other ways. I was also informed that since I brought it up to the board, that it is now the town's responsibility. God forbid somebody gets killed. God forbid somebody gets not injured where they pass away, but they're disabled. Is that going to fall upon the board and the town? We've talked about this now, it's going on a couple of months. We still haven't made a decision. Also, other people on that road have complained. It is dangerous, there's a lot of things that are dangerous. But if we address something, we should know about it within a three-month period, a six-month period. This has been going on for years. I, you know, I personally feel what the Thompsons had said, that Melissa should have that raise. If it was voted upon and it was agreed upon, then the person should get it. I've worked for corporations for years. If they ever took money away from me that was already promised to me and voted upon to me, I would be very disheartened. I wouldn't stay. I would tell them to go pile sand. You know, that's just me. I'm not saying she should do that. I'm a little bit more volatile when it comes to things like that, but I really think that if other people get the raise, whether it's the 3-point whatever or it's a 5-point whatever, it, what you promised somebody should follow through. That's the way I feel. I, I don't write the checks, but I offered to pay for the damn stop signs.
You did.
Yeah.
You did. Thank you, Jordy. Anyone else? All right, seeing no more comments, I return, I close the public discussion and return to the regular order business. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting in the, during the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. It's all right, we're done. We're done now.
I can't stand these people. Get up there and just go.
Oh, I know, I know.
I know, I think we're done now, but this guy was just too.